Everyone, please. All of yourself.
Thank everyone for coming to this Board of Supervisors meeting, February 3rd. This time we'll call it Order and Ask Mr. Slade if he'll have our invocation, please.
I'd be glad to. Let's pray together. Father your grace, your mercy overwhelms us. Thank you for your presence here with us today. Father, thank you that you've given us this opportunity to come together with our fellow citizens, Lord, and conduct this as the county. Thanks for the leadership, these gentlemen, Lord. I pray that you can give them wisdom, discernment that they need today, that they'll make decisions, Lord, that please you. Father, I pray that as we consider those who are out there serving and protecting us today, Father, we'll remember them. Father, we'll take the opportunity to thank them for their service. Father, that we will always look to you as the giver of all good and perfect things with the proudness of Jesus' sake.
Amen.
Okay, for public comment, we have several people. We're gonna start with Ms. Reed.
Oh, gosh.
Welcome.
Thank you. Just got my eyes done, so I gotta put on a second pair here. First, I wanna thank this body for allowing me an opportunity to come before you. And to the presiding president, Mr. Bishop, who I... Oh, how are you?
Good.
All right. I'm coming in an attitude of beseechment, I suppose you could call it that. And the lady did shed a little light. But I'm learning as I go, but I'm trying to see if there's a possibility.
Ms. Reed.
I'm sorry.
I know you, and we know each other, but some people don't. Would you say your name, full name and address, for the record?
All right. My name is Nettie Steam Reed. I use my middle initial, you know. And I live at 608 Midway Road. My post office address is Lena, 39094, but I'm up at the Pisgah area. That's where I reside, at Pisgah. Thank you. Because there are so many things that we don't have control over, and I do understand that. But I just wanna see if there's any way this body and my supervisor, Mr. Gaines, can offer some suggestions, just in case it's raining, how could we, you know, be able to be on the inside in order to conduct, you know, county business, et cetera, et cetera.
Ms. Reed.
Yes, sir.
I think you're talking about the Sand Hill Pisgah Library on caucus day.
Yes.
Which would be, I think, the first Tuesday in March, something like...
Second.
Second Tuesday?
It's on the 15th.
Okay. On that day, you want to be able to go inside?
Yes.
The library?
Yes, impossible.
And have the... For the Democrat caucus.
Yes. Yes, that is it. You stated it, so that sums it up for me.
Ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I'll do everything I can to make sure those doors open.
All right. I really appreciate it.
I've got four of the guys up here I gotta convince to let me have a key too, though.
All right. All right. Thank you so very much. That was my request, and thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Next, we have Mr. Jarvis Ward.
Good morning, Board and everyone else. I hope you're all well. It's good to be back. I'm Jarvis Ward. I live at 815 Boston Road, Pearl, Mississippi, 39208. And I serve with the Pearson Foundation. Pearson is an acronym. It comes from the community, Carver Pearson Community, and it is people employing available resources to strengthen our neighborhoods. And we do that through a prayer, care, share approach. And I guess several years ago, right after I came back, basically, I was living here, but, and took over the role as president of the Pearson Foundation after being gone almost seventeen years working around the country, with a desire, in a sense, to come and give the balance of my life to invest in younger people. I just started my three minutes, so that was just like an introduction. So you know who's speaking. Basically, to give the balance of my life, investing in younger people and their parents and the Pearson Foundation, kind of their anchor programs, after-school tutoring and mentoring, where we have several sites in Pearl. In-school mentoring, yes, inside the school, we go in and meet with the high school, Pearl, junior high, upper elementary, and gonna develop into the north side shortly thereafter. And we do Summer Reading Institute, reading, only five weeks of reading. And we also are involved in youth leadership development. It's called our... And we work very closely with Judge Broom with our post-detention youth ministry, and that is the only organization, I think, currently, maybe it's changed, that's working post-detention youth ministry in Rankin County. With that, I appreciate the partnership we share with the Rankin County Board of Supervisors. We have a number of little projects that we have worked on, and we're getting ready to work on another one and looking forward to it. But I wanted to share something, or really just share testimony. Sometimes you get a, you know, the guy, whoever with an organization comes and shares, but this is really a neat little thing. Last week, one of our work development persons did an interview with one of our students, and I'm gonna wrap up my piece simply with this. I'm gonna leave out names and so forth, but I hope you will be... Listen, if you live in Rankin County, I hope you will be encouraged just by this little bit story. My name, and then I will mention his name. I'm a sophomore at a college in Mississippi. I left out the college name. I run track. I'm studying to be a social worker. I believe I was twelve or thirteen when Mr. Ward, who lives in the neighborhood where I grew up, there are a lot of things that go on in that neighborhood that most people don't know about. These are his words, literally translating his words. I could have easily been out doing some of the things that people do in that neighborhood, but being a part of the in-school mentoring program kept me away from those things. Most people in my neighborhood don't go to college. But Mr. Ward and the Pearson Foundation in-school mentoring kept me on a certain path, and now I am in college. I hear different individuals that work with us during this in-school mentoring, and it helped me even to this day. I remember back in high school, there would be days when I would go into our sessions unfocused, stressed about school, life and everything, and the in-school mentoring would help me regain my focus. There are so many things I enjoyed about the in-school mentoring program. I really found the open discussions helpful. We talked about everything, and Mr. Ward and the staff challenged us in so many ways. One particular ministry I will always remember is when a college student came and talked to us about his experience as a college student. He was so helpful to me, and now I'm in college, I know what he was talking about. One of my favorite activities was a particular trip we took. Mr. Ward and the staff would take us on so many places. One time, we went to Houston to a convention. There were a bunch of other guys in the program just like us. I really enjoyed that convention. We talked about many things, but mostly how to be a young black man. We went to a Houston Rockets game while we were there, and I will never forget it. As I said, I didn't grow up with a lot, and I would never have experienced, had experiences like this without the Pearson Foundation. I would tell every college... I'm sorry. I would tell every high school student who are considering being a part of the Pearson Foundation in-school mentoring program to just do it. It doesn't matter if everything is going right in your life or not, or what situation you're in, it would be helpful to you regardless. If they're in a situation like me, being from a place like I'm from, being around people I grew up with, it would really, literally save their lives. I would definitely tell them to consider it. If Mr. Ward and the Pearson Foundation ever needed me to come back and talk to the younger guys about my experience, I would share how the Pearson Foundation has helped me and how it can help them too. I want to thank you, Board, for being a part of helping us help others here in Rankin County.
Thank you. Well, we don't have anyone else signing up public comment, and on our agenda, Mr. Franco's not here, so we'll just move forward, and if he happens to show up, we'll take him then.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve our business.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
All right.
All right, Ms. Gilbert.
I want to be mine as quickly as y'all just did all that.
We can.
Okay. Then just read this and say, okay. No, I'm teasing. Okay, so for me, I've got just a couple of items really quickly. Asking for authority to pay registration fees in the amount of $250 each for myself and three of my collectors. The class is in Pearl, March 16th through 20th. Just asking for that registration fee and mileage for the clerks.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Next up, requesting a budget amendment in the amount of $8,937 for replacement of chairs for both the Brandon and Flowood offices. I don't know when those chairs have been last replaced. Several of them are in terrible shape. We've actually got some that we tell people not to sit on one side or the other because they are that broken, and this would get consistency between the two offices.
These are ones they sit in behind the windows?
It's the clerk at the counter and in the back office also.
Okay.
Motion approved. Motion by Daniel, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And lastly, requesting approval to purchase time clocks for each of the locations. They currently use paper for time management, and I would like to get that up to the year 2020. So the total on that should be approximately $1,750.
These are time... Somebody put...
It's finger. They actually do by their finger. It's actually the same ones that Larry has.
It keeps up with the hours that the employees are working.
Yes, sir.
Check in and check out.
Is it gonna be interfaced here, back to your office, or...
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Have a motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
All right, that's it for me.
Relatively painless.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve roadwork accomplished January 2020 and roadwork scheduled.
You skipped something.
Huh?
You want me to skip something?
Where is he?
Yeah, right above the roadwork stuff.
Okay.
Somewhere between...
Probably skipping him.
Yeah.
I don't know how I scooted down there. Sure did. Well, that's where I skipped him. He wasn't here.
All right, so I'll be standing in for John this morning. The first thing would be to petition a change of assessment of the 2019 real and personal property assessment rolls.
Make motion approved.
Second. Motion by Jared, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Second thing, petitions to adjust 2019 Homestead exemption supplemental rule.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
All right, third is going to be a renewal of our service maintenance contract for our Kip 36-inch wide water scanner in the amount of $2340 for 2020 to 2021.
Is this a maintenance agreement that's expiring and...
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's one we've already had. We're just redoing that.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And the third thing, the City of Richland, Pat Sullivan, has asked if they could take their zoning layer and add it to our CMPD map, basically so when people bring up the county map as they're zooming through stuff, they can click on and turn on the City of Richland zoning layer. Pat is sending me a letter of request for that, but CMPD wants y'all's approval to be able to add that layer into our system.
Motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion?
I just... The other cities, they do the same thing?
They haven't asked us. Richland's the first city that just asked if they could stick it out there. You know, I would hope that Flowood, Pearl, and Brandon would follow suit.
It would be nice.
They just don't know. Pat works in the office, so...
Yeah, and I assume CMPD does all of theirs as they do Richland's.
Right.
So basically, it would just be a request from the City of Brandon to come in to us to be approved by y'all for them to just put the layer out there.
Okay. All right. I'm just curious.
They'll be in here soon.
Can I suggest that you guys consider amending your motion to authorize Richland and any other municipality that desires to...
Within Rankin County?
Within Rankin County, and is willing to send in a letter to CMPD. That way, it's handled. They just need to follow through.
Want to come back every time. Yeah, that's good.
Okay, motion amended to include any other city within the boundaries of Rankin County.
I second.
You second it, yeah.
All right, any discussion?
One of you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I already made the motion.
Keep your seat, Mike.
I already made this motion for you, Mike.
Second.
Yep.
All right, motion by Jared, second by Daniel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item we have on the agenda is on Freedom Farms in District 4. At the request of the developer of Freedom Ridge Part IV, action by the Board of Supervisors to rescind the board's prior approval of the final plat for Freedom Ridge Part IV, and authorization of Chancery Clerk to provide notice in the land records of the board's actions to rescind said final plat, and action by the Board of Supervisors to approve the preliminary plat for Freedom Farms, a development that relates to the same real property that was previously identified as Freedom Ridge Part IV. I'll explain that a little bit, because that's almost confusing to me, is the developer did a final plat for Freedom Ridge Part IV, which was a few lots, and now he wants to include some more lots and call it Freedom Farms all as one. So he wants to incorporate Part IV into a larger plat that's called Freedom Farms. So we're recommending rescinding the final plat, help me out, Craig, if I'm saying that wrong, but rescinding the final plat of Freedom Ridge Part IV and approving the preliminary plat for Freedom Farms.
All right.
This development is on a gravel road? Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And there's no plans for the county to upgrade that from a gravel road?
That is correct. This development actually touches on two gravel roads. It corners on them.
I just want it to be clear, when someone buys a lot in there, they understand they're buying a lot on a gravel road, and there are no plans or anything else to change that from what it is right now?
That's correct. Yes, sir. And we'll certainly clarify that at this point and when the final plat is recommended.
When we looked at the original one, it was just a... And it's not a lot of lots. I mean, these are large acreage, but still, I don't...
You know, you can say that all you want.
I can say it all I want. But I'm saying it. We do not have the funds. If the developer wants to, and I almost want to ask him or require him, however, this has been a gravel road for fifty years, and I mean, I almost want them to improve the road, but it is a county road, and it's a gravel road, and it may change later, but we have no plans.
Where is this? Where is this?
It's Stump Ridge and Stole Ridge.
It's the corner of Stump Ridge and Stole Ridge.
Both of them are gravel roads.
And that where a lot of log and done?
It was. They about logged it all out.
Yeah. Put a paper company on some of it?
They bought this from them.
I got you.
I think... I'm okay with everything we're doing, as long as it's clear, and I feel sure that the developer is clear on it, but it's a gravel road.
So what are you saying? You want him to bring it up?
No, I can't...
It's impossible for one developer, because he's going into two other gravel roads, you know? I love the idea of having them, you know?
I don't... I just want whoever is looking or thinking or buying to understand it's a gravel road, and ten years from now, it may still be a gravel road.
All right. To clarify for the record as well, these are both public roads.
Right.
They're not private roads.
Right.
They're public roads. They're both gravel. They're both old logging roads. The county assumed responsibility for them long ago. We've been maintaining it continuously ever since. The Development Ordinance for Rankin County authorizes this board to require, if it decides to do so, to require a developer to improve an existing public road if this board determines that the development activity will substantially impact that public road. I just want to make sure that that's clear on the record.
I would if the county or public road, even close to it, was paved.
Correct.
But if we make this developer pave this, it'll only be paved in front of these houses, and as soon as they get past their home, they're gonna be on the gravel road anyhow.
That's right.
So that's why I'm not requiring it.
And that's why it's your discretion to require it or not.
Yep.
Also, it needs to be pointed out that part of your action to decide whether or not in your discretion a developer should be required to improve what is an existing public road as a part of the development activity, you consider things like the density of the development. And in this case, you're talking about seven or eight lots that are in the neighborhood of ten to fifteen acres apiece.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second item we have is on the Andrew Chapel Road Bridge Replacement Project. Recommend an approval of Pay Application Number Nine to Joe McGee Construction, Inc., in the amount of $38,273.60, and authority to issue the check.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Daniel. Any discussion?
So, Tim, this has nothing to do with Andrew Chapel, but what we're paying here is a bridge that's a way around while they're working on Andrew Chapel.
This is the Bridge Replacement Project where they're replacing two drainage structures. One of them was a bridge, one of them was culverts. And so this is work done on that project. This is not the road project. This is on the bridge, the replacement project, the drainage project.
We put a...
Temporary bridge.
Temporary bridge for people to go around while they're working on this bridge?
Yes, sir. That is correct. It's actually a box covert going in instead of a bridge, but yes. They put a temporary... The contractor has the responsibility of building the temporary...
Yep.
Runaround, is what it's called, and they can either put... They can put a box structure in there, they can put culverts in there. They opted to put a precast bridge in there. So they put a precast bridge in while they're building the box covert.
All right, I got a question. Being you brought that up, and this is not even in my district, but I've gotten probably fifteen or twenty people call or whatever. Highway 18, they're gonna do some work, and they're talking about just beyond maybe Brandon city limit, somewhere down there, closing the road.
I've got this call, too.
Closing the road for months while they fix a bridge.
Correct, yes, sir.
There's tremendous amount of traffic. Can you voice... I mean, I think that would be detrimental. It would safety for our Sheriff's Department, our ambulance service, our fire. If you had to go five miles or more around the loop, go around all over Rankin County...
Seven miles.
Seven, seven miles. Can you help us with... I know that State Highway MDOT, tell them we do not want to close that road. If we close that road, it is gonna be terrible.
Absolutely, yes, sir. What we'll try to do is compile something that, on behalf of the sheriff and...
And we've done it for the county.
Right. No, and as we understand it, MDOT's policy now is they don't build bypasses around. That's kind of their unwritten policy now, and that's fairly new. And this will be one of the, I guess, one of the first ones that I think maybe across at the reservoir, they did it, they shut a bridge down there. But that's, as we understand it, that's their policy now, but we can certainly impress on them that... And our concern is, MDOT's gonna set a detour route. I don't know... They're gonna probably try to keep it off of local county roads as best they can. The problem is, they're not gonna keep the traffic off of the local county roads. The folks down there, they know what their shortest route's gonna be, and my fear is, and I haven't looked at it in depth, I've talked to Brad a little bit about it, but I don't know exactly what their route is gonna be, and I don't know if they're gonna, like I said, set the route on the local county roads, but the people down there are gonna travel local county roads, because that's gonna be the quickest route for them. So that's the discussion.
But the quickest route is still seven miles, huh?
Well, they want people from Puckett area and further south, Smith County folks, to go up 43 Highway to get it to 20.
But if you were to live within a half a mile of where the bridge is, you gotta go down to Puckett, get on 43, come all the way to Pelehiachi.
Or cut through.
And... Well, I'm glad you brought that up.
Is it not possible to make a temporary bridge to the side of?
It is. We did it.
Yes, and that's what MDOT has historically done. And I don't know if it's budget constraints or what, but now their policy is, basically, we don't build temporary structures anymore.
In Rankin County, they need to...
Well, they said it was gonna cost them a million dollars to put a temporary bridge in.
Well, we put one in for a whole lot less than that. I mean, we did it on Andrew Chapel.
I've got those same phone calls, and I've expressed exactly what you said.
I'm working on that. I've talked to a lot of folks on this, and Mr. Willie Simmons is...
Okay. All right, good. Thank you, Tim, for bringing that up.
Yes, sir.
I think we're ready to vote on this, B.
You sure?
Yeah.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you, Tim.
Yes, sir.
For bringing that up for me.
All right, Ms. Slade.
You want to combine all three of those?
Yes, the first, the first three items under my section A, B, and C could be taken together.
I'll make a motion to set A, B, and C to public hearing on February 14th.
Second.
Motion by Brad, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Mr. President, item D is an authorization to retain and pay the expenses of a courtroom interpreter for a litigant with limited English proficiency in the Rankin County Chancery Court, and the authority to issue that check upon receipt of a billing statement. The expected cost of this service is $250.
It's one deal.
Just one case.
Yeah. Make the motion approved.
Second. Motion by Jared, second by Daniel. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Second item, if you'll forgive me, let me grab my copy. Second item, item E is consideration of and potential action to adopt a resolution that expresses support by this board for the Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution and Article Three, Section 12 of the Constitution of the State of Mississippi. Mr. President, with your indulgence, I can go through the resolution as presented. You have a copy before you. First section is a restatement of the Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. Article Three, Section 12 of the Constitution of the State of Mississippi. Interestingly, some, some folks may or may not be aware that the Constitution of the State of Mississippi also has a protection for the right of the people to keep and bear arms. The right of every citizen to keep and bear arms in defense of his home, person, or property, or in aid of a civil power when thereto legally summoned, shall not be called in question. But the legislature may regulate to forbid carrying concealed weapons. And so this board is being offered the opportunity to express its opposition to any legislative act that purports to restrict the right of the citizens of Rankin County to keep and bear arms. Rankin County Board Supervisors is expressing its intent to oppose, subject to the limitations imposed by the United States Constitution and the Constitution of the State of Mississippi, any legislative action that unconstitutionally restricts the right of Rankin County citizens to keep and bear arms. And so that would be the resolution that is before you today. If this board is prepared to move forward, it'd be appropriate to take action on the proposal.
I make a motion approved.
Second. Motion by Jared, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
For the record, Mr. President, I'd like to add one comment from legal counsel. This resolution is very carefully crafted. It is the result of actions that have been most recently, that have most recently come to light with respect to the state of Virginia. As you recall, the state of Virginia elected a new House of Representatives and Senate, and it changed the dynamics there. That legislative body, that state legislative body, began immediately passing legislation to restrict gun ownership and to potentially impact private gun ownership rights. And as a result of that activity, the movement has begun across the United States for local legislative bodies, as yourself, to indicate very clearly in its minutes, on its records, that it intends to do everything within its constitutional authority to oppose any unconstitutional mandate precisely from a state legislative body. I want to be very clear about that. In the state of Mississippi, we're fortunate that we have a state legislature where it is highly unlikely that that legislature would adopt regulations or laws that would unconstitutionally infringe on the right of the people to keep and bear arms. So we don't anticipate, at least in the near term, that that's an issue for us. But now we are on record saying that in the event a future legislature in this state were to adopt legislation that unconstitutionally infringes on the right of the people to keep and bear arms, this board is ready to take action to offset or to mitigate that. So that's the purpose of it. I want to get that on the record.
Thank you.
Mr. President, the next item under my section of the agenda is too long for me to read out. Let me explain to you that oftentimes we have tax, potentially tax-exempt organizations that will apply to our local tax, to our tax assessor's office for an exemption from abject taxation. The state of Mississippi recognizes, potentially recognizes the 501(c)(3)'s, 501(c)(4)'s, other qualified federally level qualified tax-exempt entities to apply for these. We have a process that we go through. A part of that is they have to establish their right to the exemption. And so many times I am afforded an opportunity as board counsel to look at those applications. I have reviewed item F and item G, and so if we can, I'd like to take those together because they end up at the same place. The entities are asking for an exemption, in my opinion, after reviewing and looking at the state law, looking at the application. Neither of these applicants qualifies for the tax exemption, and I am recommending to the board that both be denied. That's items F and G.
Well.
Okay.
I make motion of motion there?
Motion to deny the tax exemption request made by the applicant in item F and the applicant in item G.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Jared, second by Daniel. Any discussion?
Craig.
Yes, sir.
What prick you just say, hey, this is not, what part does, I mean, just, so I don't know.
Yes, sir. All right, so one of these is a, is a 501(c)(3). It's kind of a humanitarian organization for pets. It's called Spay and Neuter. What they have to establish, Steve, is not just that they have a 501(c)(3). They also have to establish that their governing articles comply with Mississippi law. And that application does not have any information in it that would allow us to make that determination. So the application is incomplete, and it falls short of what is needed under Mississippi law to qualify for a local government tax exemption.
When do they apply for this?
They applied, well, you had to ask me that, didn't you? It's been within the last, within the last 60 days.
Oh, so it means it's not something
Have they never applied before?
To my knowledge, neither of these has made application before.
I thought there was something that happened in the past, and we've caught it.
They actually are required to specifically enumerate, using Mississippi law, the actual exemption entitlement that they have. They have to, they have to tell us, we are exempt under this particular code section. And they have not done that. They've just simply pointed to their federal tax exemption and said, if so, we are, we are also exempt under local regulation.
I see one of them's name is Baptist Home Inc.
Yes, sir. That is a, that is a private nonprofit entity. It's not a church. They run, my understanding is that they run a nursing home facility. And so it's a, it's a medical care facility, Steve. And so if you'll look under that particular item, it says, they have to, they have to establish that they are a not-for-profit corporation under 501(c)(3) whose membership or governing body is appointed or confirmed by religious society.
Oh, okay.
Or ecclesiastical body. And there is nothing in their corporate documentation that establishes that they are under the control of a board or body that is ecclesiastical in nature.
All right. There's a huge difference in these two, though, you know, I mean, as far as their operation goes.
Yeah, I'd say so.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
That's probably not the last we'll hear from either or both of those folks. If I could add one other thing, and not to get either of you guys or myself in any hot water. We have to be careful with these exemptions. Oftentimes, you will find entities that are able to secure federal tax exemptions. For whatever reason, they just qualify. But they are, in nature, they are competing in the private market. And by providing for abject taxation, we can give unwittingly, we can give a competitive advantage to entities that are really operating in a private market. Okay? So we have to be really careful and deliberate about that and look for, and we've got to follow the law. The law tells us very clearly what the requirements are, and if they can't, if they can't provide that documentation, then we can't grant the request. Item H is a resolution that expresses support for our
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Daniel. Any discussion?
Or radar.
Put it in all caps. Don't want to put it out there.
Right, right. This is our annual radar resolution. Mr. President, with your indulgence, can we please move my item K?
Tell us finish voting on it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right.
If I, if I may, can we please move item K up to this point right here before we start talking about item I? I'd like to get our circuit clerk and our election commissioners before you instead of waiting on that discussion. So item K would be a discussion of potential action on two things. One is 2020 election services that are, that are provided by the Office of the Rankin County Circuit Clerk in an amount not to exceed $12,500 per election and runoff. The terms and the conditions are identical to the terms and conditions that were approved for similar services provided during the 2018 election cycle and also a part of 2019. So that's the first item. If we could take these items separately, that'd be great.
Sure. I wasn't paying attention where we at.
We're on, we're in need of a motion to authorize item K, sub-paragraph A, which is election services provided by the circuit clerk.
Yeah, I'm gonna make that motion to approve on item K and A. Is that what you want?
Yes, sir.
K and L.
K and A.
A.
K, paragraph A.
All right, got a motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Ayes have it.
Item B is something that would be new for the board to consider. This would be an annual agreement, and let me go back and stress that, and I want everybody to understand. An annual agreement, not per election, not a runoff. This is an annual agreement that would be between the Board of Supervisors and the Rankin County Circuit Clerk, where she would provide oversight, maintenance, and accountability for the election equipment and hardware in the amount of $5,000 annually under terms and conditions that are set forth in the proposal that was attached, or that is attached to your agenda. I also have a copy of the proposal if there are any questions. I noticed that my circuit clerk is here, and also members of the election commission are here as well in the event that the board has any questions.
Well, I just want to make sure they've all discussed, everybody understands everyone's position, who's gonna do what when the election comes. See, our election commissioners are good with it?
So you're, y'all are aware of everything?
Election commissioners.
Election commissioners. I just wanted to make, we just, I wanted to make sure you were aware because a lot of times I get a phone call going, we want to wear something. So that's reading. I wanted to see your face and see your head move. Yes. Yeah, okay. I wanted you included.
Do any of y'all have anything, any comments or whatever that would add or take away or anything we need to know?
Come forward.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve item B under K.
Second. All right, motion by Daniel.
Hey, can I, I want to add one thing, though. I just want to add, just for one year, to come back and relook at it after one year on the calendar.
Yeah, I agree.
Come back in one year and look at it. The contract for $5,000 for one year.
Yes, sir.
And then
I actually think that that is, it may not be clear here, Daniel.
It says that in A, but we took A separately, so I just want to throw that in there just for the it says 2018 election cycle.
Yeah, that was, it's the same terms and conditions that we had in 18. You're obviously, you're doing it for 20.
Gotcha, perfect. So for one year on item B, that'll be my motion.
Yeah, and the intent really for both of these is that it would be a one-year look and that we would come back and renew these
Sure, each year.
Each cycle. I think that's kind of the design that we've had going forward, and I think Ms. Becky's fine with that.
Because I know a lot of our discussions revolve around our IT guys doing this, and we keep, every year we lose traction on that. Based on
We have a stable one now. He's not going anywhere.
Should be good in a year then.
As soon as we get past our November election.
Every year.
I would like to revisit it to where we're not up against a window. I mean, it's five weeks.
That's right.
And we're down a employee or two, two employees in IT. I just don't think that there's any other way to do this confidently than what we're doing. But let's just revisit it in November to where we're not having this issue.
Exactly.
You mean after the November?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I agree with that. I thought you meant to wait until November.
No, after the cycle.
Start the discussion.
After the cycle's over. And I'm not saying we change or not. Let's just have some time to massage it or digest it.
Right. So we'll do our best to make sure we remember that.
We should remember ourselves.
I hope so. I hope so. I hope so. We'll do our best.
All right. All right, so we had a motion second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. President, if we're ready to move back, we can pick up now with item I, which is to acknowledge a clarification to the bond project list and inventory. And I'm gonna let my chauffeur handle that easy deal right there.
Easy.
We should have districts on here.
No, you don't.
Yeah, I do. Uh. Danish, Orange, Connor, Haley, Market. Monterey, North Street.
We need the same thing.
Man, that's facilities. Oh, I got one right here. I got $250,000 for that one. Mill Creek, drainage, Holly Bush Road.
I'm just saying.
That sucker's been finished for months. Why is it on here?
It's just so where you get reimbursed.
That's where they get some more money.
It's like maybe they can remind us.
I know that.
Did Brad, Brad, did you know about the Market?
It's $600,000.
Y'all know about the Market Road?
I guess that's
I didn't know it was on there.
It was I never heard anything brought up on the Market.
It was to do an overlay, but I think that's what we gave him $2 million, too.
Yep.
Yeah, I do have a comment on the warning sirens. I don't know if it'd be now or when you do that.
Well, as far as Market goes, we may end up having to do it eventually anyway because, you know, it's our trucks that run it down.
Yep. I remember that we have the heavy weight on it. I only have two stars out of all these projects, Mike.
I don't have any.
You don't have any? Let me start marking and show you.
He got Monterey, Thomasville.
All right.
That Market is in your district.
I know.
North Street's in your district.
Is that the one right here beside?
Yes, sir.
New building.
Warning sirens are in your district.
Well, that's what we need. I don't want to talk about the warning sirens. Some of them sirens in, maybe in Jared's, too.
Yeah, I think, I think Word's got a, you got a plan on the sirens, don't you?
Radius, I put them.
Another plan?
Yeah.
In 25 words or less? Can't do it.
Me and Word, me and Word's working on something else, too.
Word's always working on something.
Hey. Sirens, adding new sirens, we get this 10 and 1/2.
Okay, are y'all ready to start on this?
We spent $27,000 last year making what we got.
Those strike throughs are the ones that y'all had said was probably come off.
What now?
The ones that have a strike through, such as the drainage funding, initial amount of a million, has a strike through. The down under additional projects, the implementation of water ship program that was $2 million, it has a strike through. The unicorn has a strike through. Those are the ones that you said potentially are going to be removed. That amount is not included in these totals you see. The total down here, total project amount of $28,188, those amounts are not included in this. So if you were to go back and add them, that would be on top of it. So as you can see right now, what is a project amount, $28,188, is a little bit over the bond proceeds that you have spent of $27,800.
Yours is already paid.
So I wanted to make, we wanted to make sure these are the projects that we're paying out of the bond, and they are what you want paid out of the bond fund.
What is the, what is the road flooding emergency 1.5?
That has been listed since
What is it?
Day one. I don't know. It was on the original, it was on your original list.
Yeah, it was to fix any road flooding in my district. Well, there's about 25 items on here, and I can see I have two. So I'll take that one and a half million for road.
My recollection is that that's Pine Brook, but
But we added Pine Brook down here.
Right, that's why I needed some clarification. This one says road flooding emergencies. That's all it ever stated, and that's the only title it ever had, and that's the amount it had out there by it.
Well, I would think we ought to take Pine Brook out of that.
One or the other.
So that'll get us back in range somewhat.
Well, keep in mind that you have to make findings. So that's probably a placeholder for you guys to be able to make findings that we have to make under 19592.1, where we say this, this situation of drainage, which is on private property, is affecting public infrastructure, and therefore we need to attend to that. That's a specific finding that you have to make. More than likely, that's a placeholder for that.
All right.
I don't know that.
But the problem, but the problem is
So the purpose of this is basically give us an idea of where we're currently at.
Right.
Not necessarily, I mean, obviously, as we get going.
See, we're, we're paying for items out of this, and we don't want to erroneously pay for items out of the bond fund that we should not be paying out here. So if there's anything that y'all say, we don't want this. This came off the original list that y'all looked at when we got the money. These were some of the items on it. So if you don't want that, we need to know now before we get too far into paying for these items from that money.
With the Monterey, Thomasville improvement intersection deal, there's a bridge down there that's gonna have to have some work done to it. And each side of the, each side of the bridge, the road, the county road, it floods every time there's a big rain. And I mean, I think using some of that, some of that money that $438 would benefit Thomasville Road better than trying to
It's your district.
What about you, some of that, what about you, some of that money from what they used to talk about this, where was it flood? 1.5 road flooding emergency?
If there's enough in there.
I understand. It's got you talking about flooding.
I'm not sure exactly what that $438
That was to do a straighten up intersection.
That's just the intersection.
But, I mean, that road is pretty curvy, so I mean, you're not really I mean, it's gonna be a lot.
Realignment at that intersection, basically, it is.
So that, that would require then board action if they want to use some of this existing
It's in, it's on the original list, also under additional.
Oak Grove drainage.
Tim's supposed to be working up some kind of figures on this.
I'll be honest, I didn't think he did.
What do we take the bill, that road up on each side of that bridge?
Already done it.
That was already paid for.
Yeah.
But
Oak Grove's already paid for.
That's what I was actually trying to ask about that.
It's got $500,000 to be paid right here.
Is that what it said, to be?
There is $500,000 to be paid, and then there's
Are we not already paid that?
Yes, I think.
You see what they did, they reimbursed us.
That's what they said. I guess they put it in there so they can reimburse us for it.
Put the money back in our road.
It's down here, though. It shouldn't be in road.
What's the Oak Grove drainage? Have we already paid that one?
The Oak Grove drainage, this was just the initial amount set. That's not what we spent to date. That's the initial amount set within the bond money.
So what's the additional, additional projects? Oak Grove's on there again.
Why is it on the list twice?
It's duplicated. So the It's duplicated. So the second one down, under additional projects?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that the same thing as Oak Grove in the original?
I see it up there now. Yeah, it's just a duplication, I guess.
Alright, so I see the same. Alright, so I see the same thing on the E O C microwaves. There's three hundred thousand under additional projects? But then there's also warning sign, warning signals under original projects. Is that, is that two different?
Huh?
That's two different things. Microwaves and warning sirens, those two different things.
Word, you know what that, Word, what's, what is that?
Radio.
The microwaves? There's three hundred thousand under microwaves, under additional projects.
That's the last three links of the microwave system that operates our, uh, entire radio system. To bring it up where it actually functions like it was designed, you now pay eleven million dollars for it first time.
You just had to throw that in there.
I walked into that one. I saw where he's going with it. I just tried to get him off early and he just kept going. I saw him headed there.
What does it mean when it says reimbursement, original estimate? I mean, what do we?
Yeah, I didn't think it had any of it in there really.
Y'all voted to reimburse projects.
But I mean, it just says two hundred fifty thousand, that's just. It says reimbursement, original estimate, that's two fifty.
That is what y'all originally, that was on here, that you thought you might reimburse yourselves? But you actually reimbursed yourself two million.
So we, so we can take that one out?
Well, it's.
It's included, so we don't need to listen twice.
Well, you're actually over that amount because you reimbursed yourself two million eight hundred and something.
Is there any action that we need to take on this or are we just reviewing it?
No, there's not. I'm just trying to get clarification so we don't spend
Yeah.
money out of the bond fund that we're gonna have to later go do journal entries and budget amendments to pull it back out.
Well, the only thing that I know, it's probably gonna be a nightmare to keep up with is all our asphalt that we're doing and what's coming out of here, what's coming out of the road budget.
That is something that, this five million that's under the Civil Link Road Plan, that's something that I'm gonna have to get with Mike on because all of these projects that are done out of here are supposed to be capital projects that we have got to put on our inventory system. So I've got to, every bit of that money has to be accounted for matching a project to go on inventory.
Well, can we have some input on some of those?
Harrison, I was being sure you seen this. You see the list? You got a sheet? You saw it?
No, I'm saying on some of this, uh, Civil Link project, can we have some, we have some say in some of them, some of them I'm, I, I've seen. I may not agree with what application we're using on them or, or whether they need it at all because of the traffic deal. I would say they, they rode the roads, they don't know the roads. So, I, I mean, I just was looking through, I could see some of that. And, uh, just, I'd like to know where some of it's going. I may as well rather shift some here. No change in money, just rather to put it over here than sit over here.
I can tell you what I've done in my district, Jared. If there's a, if the Civil Link calls for overlaying asphalt and a road, say on subdivision and there's another road that comes off that it's calling for chip seal. Well, you know, how can you tell these people on this side, they're gonna get mat and sealed, chip sealed, but there's asphalt over here. So I've talked to Mike and the difference in the cost may be two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Hundred fifty thousand, whatever. We've looked at the plan and there may be a place that doesn't really, I, we don't think really needs any treatment this year. Take that hundred and fifty thousand of asphalt out of another place in my, I mean, I mean.
That's, that's exactly what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking, shifting some.
But we can't get outside of the parameters and, because we'll bust his budget if.
No, I didn't say, you're not changing, you're not changing money. You're just moving it.
Yep.
Maybe putting, putting it over here.
As long, I think as long as we're careful.
But I don't know about them until sometimes after we go and start them, or I need to know where some of them are before we start them. I need to have some, some. Well, some of the places I don't agree, the roads aren't, isn't, is traveled heavier and what they're at, they're, they're saying put down there, I'd rather do away over here than get, and give asphalt as should be because it's, it's not adequate what we're putting down on the road, the traffic that's on it. And there again, when they ride our roads, they don't know everything where they are. They don't know what, what that road does.
Some else, let, let me point out real quick. I have another sheet and I didn't give it to y'all because it's quite extensive about what we've spent to date. These of course are all estimates and we're finding out that on a lot of these projects, they're going way over. Um, so, because of what we reimbursed ourselves and then.
You said they did what?
They're going over the amount allocated.
Like for what? Give me some examples.
Okay, an example is the, like Oak Grove, we had a half million in there. Today, we've spent over a million.
Alright, Joey, I didn't think we had any of it in there.
So we've actually spent the amount that's in both of these areas. Another one, another one is, um. Another one is the road maintenance facility, money that y'all had in here, three hundred thousand.
Hang on Laura, hang on, let's back up where you started, just so everybody understands. Oak Grove was never five hundred thousand.
Million three.
Yeah, so.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so where'd we go over?
I wasn't, I wasn't for sure it was a project.
I didn't either, I didn't think it was. Well, I think, I think since we finished it within the last six months, we're reimbursed.
That's right, and so we've carried, that's what I'm saying, so now we've carried forward. That's right.
But it's in two spots.
So we could put some more money back in road fund.
Both of those.
Yeah, if we really did this before, if.
Six months, it was in the time period that we could reimburse ourselves.
Exactly right.
Right. Hollybush Road, the same thing.
I got you.
Yeah.
So.
That's right. Another, another one where we have, uh, gone over is where we have road maintenance facility, three hundred thousand. Uh, we're over in that category. Um, Woodbridge subdivision, we're a little bit over in that category.
Oh, we're a lot over in that one.
Well, that was only through.
Well, remember we all said, hey, hey, speaking of, let me ask one question. When we get letters of credit on a road, um, a letter of credit comes in, say for five hundred thousand dollars. How is that, how do y'all take the letter of credit and how do you withdraw it out of Mike's budget? Like, so for example, when we came back into the last part of the year, right? The first phase of Woodbridge was five hundred thousand, four hundred fifty thousand, whatever that was. We absorbed that out of his budget even though we had the letter of credit to make the general count whole again? Is that right?
Well, not general count, that money had gone into the road maintenance fund and it was sitting there in cash.
Okay. I guess, I guess the thing is, what I'm trying to pull my lines together is, it deducted from his budget right there toward the end of the year.
That's right.
Because it came out of his budget, which though it was a letter of credit on that money. So it affected him on what he could do on his budget because he drew it back out.
Right, but it wasn't till the end of the year. I mean, there was no time really left to spend any money, you know, but yes, you're right.
Well, we don't know because, yeah, because it, it took him upside down in his budget right there in the last month because that letter of credit. My question is, can it not be in a separate account to where that doesn't affect his?
No, I have to keep it in there, but what it can, what can be done is, of course, that year that's closed out. What I can do is get y'all to do an amendment to take that money out of cash and bring it over here.
Which is where.
So that it's a negative impact.
Which, which is what I want. I want the letter of credit to be a negative, not to be a negative impact on his budget.
Do we have one out there now that's, that's doing?
I can't think of one, but, but I'd like to go back on the Woodbridge deal. I mean, I know it's going back into last year's budget, but I mean, that took him a big chunk of money.
Well, it doesn't matter, still, that money went in his road account. I mean, it went in his bank account, just not for his last year's budget.
Really.
But what I'm saying is.
Last year's budget's over that.
No, I understand. I'm just saying in the future, he couldn't spend that money.
Right, right, okay.
Because it was coming out, even though it was in his net savings, we'd have to go make an amendment back. If he had other projects he was wanting to do for you.
Well, I mean, but it really didn't matter, cause you know, we were over budget and that's like three million anyway.
I, I think it bottomed him out. It flipped him in the last month.
Well, I mean, we were over in our road fund, what we originally set out to spend anyway.
We should've came back here and put it back in there.
Alright.
In the future, if there is an amount out there that's gonna turn that category upside down, we can take that, bring that over in there.
He's may have to help us catch that, cause I must want, he may have to catch that on that book side.
Hopefully we won't have more issues like that where, you know.
We're upside down a half million dollars?
Yeah, yeah.
Me too.
Of course, that was, I guess, the unique it took so long for that to finish out.
Had been sitting out there for quite a while.
About on now, is it, I mean.
Well, Woodbridge is done.
That's what I thought.
It's done now, yeah. We're just talking about, there was, we had to put an extra four hundred fifty, it was an eight hundred thousand dollar deal.
Oh, really?
Their li, their letter of credit was four hundred thousand dollars. So Mike had to pull that out of his road budget.
So we just need to be cognizant of what we're spending, that we're taking away from other projects. If we go and add something that we want to take out of the bond, we have to realize it's gotta come from somewhere.
That's exactly right. Y'all, y'all have just, you hit your target now with what's in here.
Yeah. Yeah.
These are still estimates, that's right. They're all estimates.
Yeah, I feel pretty confident Governor and Andrew Chappell are not gonna come within the money.
Did what?
Oh, now you perked up, huh? I, I was just saying, I doubt that, uh, we'd come within the money on Andrew Chappell or Gunner Road. So it'll probably be helpful, we do have a little extra.
Don't put that negativity out there.
Most projects come in over, you know, so.
Yeah, 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 that's, yeah. Most of them do, you're right.
So we've had the discussion and we just need a clarification from you guys that the sheets that you're looking at are for illustration purposes, but also helpful for an accounting, for our accounting purposes. Y'all are comfortable with the projects that you see outlined there? That's what, that's the telegraph that Ms. Warren needs for the accounting side.
Comfortable with what we discussed, there's some arrows in it. But after we discuss, unlike the duplication of Oak Grove and some stuff like that.
Well, Oak Grove had, you're right, it has there, but we've already spent over a million in it, so it's not gonna help the money side either way.
It just shouldn't have been on the top, it shouldn't have been on the top half of the sheet and just shown on the bottom. There's the other, we're not adopting this and voting on it, this is just.
We're still gonna have to vote on each one of these projects that they come up anyway.
What you're being shown is a listing of projects that your accounting staff is handling as bond projects.
Yep.
Right, so let, let's just take North Street for instance. Y'all haven't, don't come back and vote on it. It's here. A bill comes through, this is where we're gonna pay it from.
Yes, ma'am.
We just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I, I don't think, uh, we can balk. The only thing, you know, we had really, uh, well, we'll just leave that alone for now.
Yep, I know where you're going.
Alright, with, with that understanding, we will move along to item J before we can move forward, Mr. Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Alright, consideration of whether to accept or reject quotes for the erection of a steel structure at the Pierce Road Fire Station and potential actions to either accept or reject those quotes. Uh, we went out R Q on the steel erection for the Pierce Road Fire Station, had two quotes back. Uh, and so we need to, we need action on whether or not to accept or reject.
How much is it?
Alright, so two quote, one quote was, uh, eleven thousand some odd.
I won't make a motion to reject.
Well, that was easy.
We checked both of them? One was eleven thousand five hundred, one was seventeen thousand, right?
Right, I won't, I won't make a motion.
I'll second it.
Alright, motion by Jared to reject this, uh, proposal, second by Steve. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye? Ayes have it.
With that action, I would like to request that we add an item and that is authorization for, uh, this year's staff to go back out for R F Q on that particular project, uh, under the same terms and conditions. But we, we need authority to go back out for R F Q on that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jared, second by Steve. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye? Pose, ayes have it.
That was to add, Jared?
Yep, motion to approve.
Motion by Jared, second by Steve, any discussion? All in favor say aye? Pose, ayes have it.
Final, under section, Ms. President, is item L, which is consideration of potential action to approve contract for redistricting services with CNPDD. I do recall that CNPDD staffers, uh, appeared before you at your work session on Thursday and provided the proposed agreements, uh, copies of those agreements have been provided. If you're prepared, the way this will work is at the appropriate time after census data has been provided to Rankin County, which we anticipate to be in early twenty twenty-one, CNPDD will review all of that redistricting data and provide an analysis to you as to whether or not redistricting is required for Rankin County. That is at no cost to the county. If it's determined that redistricting is required, your agreement provides for a lump sum payment of twenty-four thousand dollars to CNPDD to handle all of the redistricting process, which is gonna probably take the better part of about fifteen months to get completed. Motion approved.
Motion by Daniel to approve.
Second.
Second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor say aye? Pose, ayes have it. Is that it?
Hi, Ms. Laura.
Thank you. The first item I have this morning is authority for Butler Snow to, uh, file continuing disclosure statement for F Y nineteen in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Same move.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Steve, any discussion? All in favor say aye? Ayes have it.
The next item is the new Rankin Courthouse facility. It's approval of pay application number thirty-one to Chris Albritton in the amount of six hundred thousand, three hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-three cents and authority to issue that check.
Can, can my heart flutter just for a second and give me a approximate finish date? Yeah, there's no extension, good, I just, I mean, just, for just a second, can you tell me a ballpark timeframe?
Twenty twenty? A week ago, I asked, um, our architect, uh, to tell me whether or not we still believed the last word we got, which was end of March is on target. And I was advised, yes, we still see that as a legitimate potential end date. End of March. That's what I was advised.
That's two months. Ain't no way they're gonna make that. We don't have the parking lot table yet.
That's been my consistent request to them, uh, along that timeframe that they gave to us, end of March. Uh, you may recall that Mr. Franco stood there and said he felt like that was doable. So, at this point, that has not changed. I have not been advised differently.
I think we just need to quit talking about what date.
I, I didn't mean to ask that question. I know it was a bad question.
You did.
I'm sorry.
Alright, I have a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor say aye? Pose, alright.
Daniel, the next one's a little bit easier. Authority to accept a check in the amount of a hundred and three thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars and twenty-two cents for the reimbursement to Rankin County for the F Y nineteen E N P G funding.
Same move.
Second.
Motion by Daniel, second by Steve. All in favor say aye? Ayes have it. Additional business.
President, item A, under national position, debate discussion with the Board of Federal Level Assistance to Rankin County with respect to qual, potential qualifications for federal programs. Uh, our esteemed, uh, former Congressman, Ms. Harper is here, uh, to, to visit with the Board about the potential for some federal level assistance.
Good morning.
Good morning. Guys, thanks so much for, uh, letting me come by and visit with you and this is something that I know is, um, takes serious consideration on the needs of the county. And for us, it widens an eager and I have Manny McPhillips and Spence Flat Guard that appear as well, that are part of our government affairs team. And we look at the, uh, the future view of what we're gonna do in Rankin County, what our needs are. Currently, there is no one doing the federal affairs for, uh, our county. Uh, I know that, uh, we have had that in the past, uh, but this is, uh, very, uh, important, uh, to me. It's my home. Uh, I've been here since nineteen seventy-one, uh, except for going to, off to law school. Uh, and it's, uh, it's a special place and what we do and how we make sure that we don't get, uh, that we don't miss out on something. So, decisions you guys have to make, first of all, is whether or not, uh, you continue as is without that representation or you add that. And my advice would be, whether it's us or someone else, I just think you've gotta have some, some help to do these things. And my advice would be, whether it's us or someone else, I just think you've gotta have some, some help to do these things. Uh, I believe I was still in office and Thad Copeland was still, uh, U S Senator. Uh, maybe the last time we had, uh, board members come up. I don't, I don't know if you had anybody come up, uh, in the last year or not. Uh, but it is important to maintain those contacts, to see what you can do. Uh, and there are a lot of things that, uh, we have to address, uh, that you can't do on, I mean, uh, you've got, uh, what would we say, full-time, part-time jobs, right? Uh, and it is something that you cannot manage, all of that, and it would be something that our expertise, I believe, would be beneficial uh, to, to you, whether it's setting up, uh, our D C visits, which I would certainly recommend that, uh, the Board consider doing that this spring, uh, going up and making those contacts. I mean, yes, we're, we're Rankin County, we've got a large population, large voting base, and, and those senators and, uh, certainly Michael Guest, who are here, uh, on a regular basis, but we wanna make sure that's coordinated and show the needs that we have, uh, because we've gotta be able to look long-term on some things, while we get consumed about, uh, needs from, uh, phone calls from constituents that are gonna be upset, uh, which is usually, rarely you're gonna get a phone call from somebody who says you did a great job, and you're doing a great job on, on everything. You're gonna get the complaint from somebody whose house just flooded, uh, or somebody else that's, uh, that's got a particular issue. But we look at the growth of the county, we look at our demographics, and it's exciting to be here. There's, there's not a better place, uh, to be. We just wanna make sure we look at our future infrastructure, our transportation needs, we look at what we're gonna do on drainage issues and other opportunities, and make sure we avail ourselves of, you know, we can't, we can't receive grant money if we're not really pushing it in the game. So we, do we know what's going to happen? No. Um, but you know what's gonna happen if you're not in the middle of a trying. And Rankin County, uh, cannot go without this when other counties are competing for the same things that we need. So I would tell you that we're prepared to, uh, to discuss this, uh, and we really want, uh, to tell you that we're, we're looking at a proposal that would not be, uh, an amount plus, uh, expenses. Uh, and just, and that's, that's a comforting thing to know. This, it is what it would be, uh, and there are no surprises. I'm going to D C tomorrow morning. I'll be gone through, uh, come back on Friday, so that's three nights, if my math's correct. Uh, and plane trip, transportation, uh, around, some meals, that trip is probably gonna approach two thousand dollars, at least seventeen, eighteen hundred. So, and I'm up there on a regular basis. I'm going up, the other members of our team are up there on, on a regular basis. And I wanna be able to promote our county, make sure that we come up with things. It's hard to tell you what the specifics of what our priorities would be, because we haven't really dealt with that yet, is, is sitting down and having those. But we know drainage is a, is a critical issue in a lot of our districts. Uh, the transportation needs, whether that's interchanges or other things that are there, how we proceed with, uh, build grants, uh, each year. We wanna be in that mix, uh, and, and we have great opportunities, uh, and we wanted, we wanna be the ones to help. It's personal to me, uh, and that's why we're, uh, we're prepared to move forward with what I think would be a very reasonable amount. And so, uh, President Bush, Bishop, I don't know if you have, wanna ask some questions, or how you wanna proceed, uh, but we're very interested in, uh, in having this opportunity to serve the county.
Well, you know, I, I, you live in my district, and plus being our, uh, previous congressman, I know you'll be in a great position to help us. I think we need to identify some projects ourselves, you know, this board needs to get, you know, on the same page as far as what we need someone to go and help us with. But me personally, I, you know, when we get ready to do that, you're my man, so.
I would encourage you, uh, you know, obviously sooner rather than later to make the decision on, on who it would be, uh, because we don't wanna let this season go through. There are deadlines that come up. Build grant, uh, application deadlines, for instance, I believe are in July each year. So these are things, typically, if you're gonna make a trip to D C.
So what is a build grant? What is that?
Builds, build grant, uh, allows you to go into an, an area, uh, come up with things that might deal with transportation issues and, and other projects that you might, might have. Uh, if it's, you know, like Rankin County, under that has some urban areas, uh, and those urban areas are in eighty-twenty. Uh, if it's rural outside those, those areas, then the federal government on the build grant can't give up to a hundred percent, although it's likely they'll have some magic, uh, in there. But it is an opportunity to, to come up with things that we would need to do. And as you know, uh, my first year in Congress, we had earmarks, which were, uh, unfortunately had bad publicizing, but they're a great thing. And so there's some discussion, and we've had that discussion in the past few years, trying to get those back. So without earmarks, we have to look at the grant, um, approach to try to get those that are in there. So we not only, there are different grant projects that are out there, different names, so we have to go locate those and try to do that.
So are there some under transportation?
There, there would be some, uh, opportunities, you know, obviously drainage, we wanna explore the transportation issue, and then obviously, uh, meeting with DOT is always, you, you never, you never rule out anything. And so, you know, you, you don't wanna ever take a no for an answer, and you sometimes have to use your imagination, uh, to get, uh, to where you need to go. Uh, but we, we do want, um, to proceed, and as you're looking at this over the next, uh, period of time, um, certainly we're prepared to come in and sit down, we can even have more, uh, more discussion, uh, more things that are there. But, uh, this is, I think it's important to the future of the county and the opportunities for the county.
The, build grants are the old tiger grants, so it's the same thing.
I got you.
Uh, it's just been repackaged.
That's right.
Surface transportation, economic development.
A rose by any of the names.
Yes, absolutely. They love to change the names of them, so everybody gets used to calling it one thing, they don't want us to get used to it too.
I got you.
It usually comes with a new administrative.
That's right, that's right.
Any questions?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, thanks, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank y'all.
Supposed to be the former state bond attorney, in case y'all didn't.
Yeah. All right, next on our agenda is, we already did the C M P D D, right? So we have discussions.
This is your appointees, Jay.
Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. All right, what's the borrower's wish?
Tell me again, he wants to represent what?
I'd like to do the county official.
All right, all right, we can put, we can, we can, uh, put Jared and Steve on there. I'll, I'll let, I'll let y'all do it, so.
What, you wanna be the business and industry?
I, I don't really care about being on the C M P D D board. I, I would much rather be on the, uh, M P O, but I'm not sure. I think the, uh, the, uh, county representative's the one who gets to be on the M P O board.
I mean, you're the senior guy on the board, so you pick it, I mean, my mind makes a suggestion or thought. You've been here seventy years, haven't you? How long have you been here? Twenty-two years, twenty-one years?
Nineteen.
Twenty, that's it.
Oh, you hit twenty?
Twenty?
Finally hit twenty, yeah.
Woo!
Yeah.
Have you ever been at four?
Where's the little sheet?
Tell, tell us those spots that you can slide. You know, you know the slots. I don't have it in front of me.
We have.
No, we had a sheet though, who's doing what, the last time.
Yeah, they had us, uh, Mike Monk had us to break down what was what, or Chuck did.
The county official is the one who's on that.
He's on it.
This one is just on the board of P D D that you had had last time. The appointment you make here, which is an additional supervisor, and then P O, also, the county official.
Can you put three on there, Slade?
No.
You can put three on the board, but I'll, I'll, two, one, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Only two would be on M P O.
I hadn't talked to Mr. Redd, I'm assuming he still wants to participate.
Uh, I would think so.
Yeah.
By the way, Mike Monk talked to me, he is, and he's been coming to the meetings.
All right, so I'll make the motion to put Jared and Steve on there, and we can move on. So motion by myself.
Second.
Second by Brad, any discussion?
I, I would like for, uh.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
I'd like Jay to be on there with, uh, Jared.
We already have a motion and second.
We'll then vote then.
Yeah, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
All right, three, two. He carries. Next.
All right, I, uh.
Do we have any, uh, additional business?
I got a question on that.
Yes.
In the event you and I can't go, and we done, done this, but can another supervisor go in our place? No? I know, I know, with Laura being in our place.
You guys are appointed to that board, so their internal governing structure would have to identify who gets to replace who, and I don't have any idea how.
Laura, you went several times in Bob's place, didn't you?
Yeah.
Just what he could do.
I would assume that their board can accommodate an absence.
There's really no action to be taken, except for when we get ready to.
Yeah.
Do our projects once every four years.
I know the, the city send various people.
You can send somebody to go eat.
Huh?
You can send somebody to go eat and listen to, you know, the program, what's going on, but there's no action taken.
Right. So I would, anyway, okay. I'm gonna inquire about that.
There's a C M P D D workforce that I, and I'm, if I'm gonna be on this, I'm gonna give that up, because I'm also on, uh, law, law enforcement accreditation board.
You're on what now?
He's on the South Central Mississippi Works Board.
Okay, and, and what's the other one you said?
Law enforcement accreditation.
Are you on that one?
Yeah.
Is that something we're upon, Joe?
No. Uh, they asked me to be, uh, the law enforcement accreditation.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Asked me to be on.
So who are you appointing to South Central Mississippi Works?
Mr. Calhoun?
Calhoun.
When does that come up? Is this right now too?
Calhoun, I want to bother.
It would make sense. All right, so we need to make a motion to add this item to the agenda?
No, it's on the.
It is?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. So Steve made a motion to appoint Mr. Calhoun.
Second.
Daniel seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Unless Brad, you wanna vote against it.
James doesn't give his.
You're still doing the law enforcement, he's taking the other.
But the law enforcement's gonna do with the board's.
I know, but I'm just saying, it's been coming, you, that other.
All right, Brad, you have some additional.
Let's get some clarification, just so we're clear on the records and nobody's under any confusion. Jared's been appointed as the county official for the C M P D D, uh, for this term. Jared's the county official. Steve has been appointed to C M P D D board as the business and industry representative. Everybody clear with that? Mr. Redd is the minority representative.
Say it again, who has?
Steve.
Steve, Stephen, Jerry.
Business and industry representative to C M P D D board, okay? Mr. Redd has been appointed as minority representative to C M P D D. He's also an M P O appointee, and Brad will be serving as the on-the-board commissioner for the South Central Mississippi Works.
Well, that's a stretch to say it's had a term, because, you know, Madison County, I've seen them swap it out.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. Do we have to go the full, four-year term? Can we just swap it after, after two years?
I was joking, man.
Why, why couldn't we do it? Why couldn't we do it for two years, then put Bishop on if he wants to go on for the last two years?
Yeah. Well, in two years, we'll talk about it.
I think we can do it, but just if we wanna do it.
Yeah, no, we're good.
We can bring it up.
Everybody understands what we have, we already voted on it, so. All right.
I say two, I said, I'd like to make it for two years, that way we at least can make a discussion.
Man, well, look, it's all gonna be over with in a year, so.
What do you mean, it's all gonna be over with in a year? The, the.
It's funding.
Yeah, the round.
The fund?
Round.
So, uh, we have additional business?
All right.
Brad?
Uh, what's the latest on the strapping suit?
We're not, we ain't got one.
You skipped C, buddy.
What, what?
Yep.
Skip C.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I was gonna sit back and listen to Mike and Tim on this, or Tim, I guess, to kinda come back with some discussion after we had the.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Traffic we have over at Kroger and Spillway Road.
Did you get some firm prices or a little, okay.
At the last meeting, we talked about, uh, ways to kinda button up the project and get it through the winter, and, uh, so what that entails is doing some additional milling and some additional paving at, uh, each end of the North Shore project. Uh, and then that would also include, uh, going ahead and paving the turn lane on Spillway Road, which is not an additional cost, because that's in the project, they just haven't done the final paving there yet. So the additional cross, the cost of the project in a quantity adjustment would be twenty-four thousand, one dollar and twenty-five cents. And that's for, there again, that's for, uh.
Oh, that's two, that's pretty accurate, twenty-five cents, huh?
Well, it's, we, it's based on you the price quantity, so we have to, but that is an estimate of the quantities.
Okay. Well, we needed to get traffic open backed up, and the con- the contractor's willing to do this?
We've talked to the contractor, and they're willing to do this.
What time?
They're gonna do it or we're gonna do it?
What timeframe are we, what kinda timeframe are we looking at?
They've got it, whether it's permitted to do this, Friday, I'm sorry, just coming with.
Okay.
Well, if weather permits, yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I have a discussion.
All right.
What, I, I understand that where, where we're at. Why are we having to pay them more to do something that they were already supposed to do?
Well, actually, what they're doing now is, we use the term buttoning up, the project for, for the winter, for the wet time, so they can get dry weather to work. But the way the contract is, they have contract time left, and, and they have lanes open as best they can right now to track. What this is doing is trying, but because they're saying they need the, the ten to fourteen.
It's because.
I'm sorry.
Not because.
Because they, uh, they, uh, are saying that they need ten to fourteen days to, uh, to get finished up on those two lanes, and they have to have that window of good weather to do it.
I understand.
They're not gonna, they're not coming back to do that until such time, and, and we, we don't have any way to force them. So this was a way to button up the project to get another lane open headed towards Spillway Road, get the transitions from the, the existing work back to the old lanes, uh, get those to where it's easier to pass. It's just a, it's a cleanup to get it to the point where we can get them back in there to do the work.
Mike, their contract, I guess, is with the state and not us? This is.
Well, it's with us, but it's.
How do we make sure we don't get into this again? I mean, because these days, this, what y'all were explaining the other day, we don't normally work like this.
We just don't need to bid out of another project this late.
Always not do this.
Bid on no project, what?
Other L S R P project, because, I mean, L P A, because, I mean, M DOT dictates those rules to us. I mean, they, they got the right contract. All we do is the bidding process, uh, award it, and then, and they have the rules.
Until M DOT changes their policy and procedures on how they do it, we're handcuffed.
Exactly.
Yes, the estimate that you've been given today, uh, it will be packed, should be packaged around, uh, the notion that M D O T will be given an opportunity to, to pay some or all of that additional cost as a part of this project.
When you say, well, they'll be given an opportunity.
Doesn't mean they will.
They, they get to control whether or not it's, it's going to be qualified as a part of the contract, and, and should be included for purposes of reimbursement. They get to make that call, Steve, but we're gonna give them every opportunity to participate in it.
I just, it, it just rubs me wrong.
It does me good.
This has been out there since November twenty-something, and it's not even in my district, but wherever I go, somebody asks, you know, why isn't anybody working out there? I mean, even a child, I was speaking to a youth group a week or so ago, youth leaders here in Rankin County, they were eleventh graders, and I asked them, were there any questions? And this young lady in the back, a junior in high school, says, I wanna know why y'all won't finish. You stopped two months ago, and, and she has a point. I mean, uh, I understand the contract does this and that with days and all that, but it, that just don't feed the bulldog. The people that live there are suffering, and.
Wish you had known all this, and you could explain that to her, because I, I, crazy thing I've heard, the way that.
I'm gonna vote to do it, because. I'm gonna vote to do it because it's got, I mean, we just gotta make some progress, so.
Well, this, this one's actually be done, anyway, Steve, we're just basically chose some that we're actually asking them to do a little extra milling and put a little extra asphalt down, and that gives everything temporary.
There's gonna be a better road after.
Well, that's correct.
Yeah.
We're actually going above our standards on that.
Two things I wanna say first. Did we get those checks from him field on Friday on those vehicles that were damaged? Do we know anything about that?
Uh, they were to cut the checks on Friday, I don't know if they got them in the hands of the people or not.
Can somebody follow up with him field to be sure the people get their money whose vehicles got torn up from this oversight of this project?
I called them, and that's why they told me they were getting the checks, but I'll call up today and see.
The second thing I wanna say is my utter discussion, uh, or my utter disappointment in regards to safety that this contractor has placed on the people at the reservoir for not taking care of this site from November twenty-seventh up until today. And I wanna applaud Mike's crew for going out there doing work orders over and over and over again, trying to make this area safe. They got behind on this job that started on May twelfth because it didn't work in August and September. That's what's got them into this spot. And the people at the reservoir are suffering because they can't, uh, organize their company better than what they're doing right now. So, that's the frustration side of my part, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we spend the twenty, twenty-five thousand, whatever it is, to save it up.
Okay, we have a motion by Steve to approve.
And we're gonna, uh, does it, does it have any bearing on whether or not they, Janet's gonna check on those checks?
Yes.
Okay, anyway, I'll make, I'll second it.
Alright, motion by Steve, second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
You don't wanna pay?
Now, we don't have anything else, so Brad, you, you have something?
I don't wanna pay for an extra money, what they're pushing to be doing.
Stripping or on these?
Stripping.
Yeah. Stripping the heck off?
Well, if we're on, we're talking about striping? What do you, yeah, if you're talking about striping, yeah, I mean, we do have a lot, a lot of areas that need it. And I know I hate to put it down when there's gonna, we're gonna look at it, doing maybe some work there eventually. But these, we're talking about roads that have zero shoulders, I don't know what you're talking about, like, but I'm talking like Monterey.
Thomasville.
In Tom, in Monterey, all the way down Thomasville, we gotta do something with them, I mean, literally.
We doing a lot of road work.
Yeah.
Also, we're gonna have to have something done to it.
So, I don't know what we're gonna do.
Alright, so we gonna buy a machine, where's it coming from? Who's paying for it?
Well, either, either way, whether we buy one or we have it, either way, we're gonna have to have them striped, whether we buy one or we, we contract out.
Where we at now, we can be as much as six months late getting a stripe down, and, I mean, if you're running six months behind, I, I, I really, and I hate to say this on record, but there's roads that when, if we stripe them, people are happy, they can see it at night.
I agree.
And, and you don't even have to meet, you may not even have to go in there and do maintenance for another year if you'll stripe it.
No, well, no, I mean, yeah, you write them some, but, uh, I mean, because just regular roads that don't need any work.
Right.
Don't need work, the stripes are gone, so I mean, I see what you're saying. They don't, they don't need work periods for several years, but they need stripes.
Yep.
So, how much is it?
How much was it?
One forty to one I price.
I thought one eighty, so.
Alright, so where do y'all wanna take that hundred and fifty thousand from?
Yours.
Yeah, I don't have any, so.
Do you have that oak groves in there twice?
How long are, are the strippers, the people that stripe? What's going on with them? The, I mean, what far is their availability? We, we, didn't we bid that out, or get some?
No, just two quotes and everything.
Okay, but as I'm saying, have we, so we got that? We gotten those two quotes?
Well, basically, I just get two quotes on the job every time we do it.
Alright, then what I'm saying, how long does it take them to get to it? I know it has in the past taken quite a while.
I mean, it very, depending on what their workload is, they're not gonna walk off one of these other jobs and...
I got a third guy that has asked about doing this. I don't know if you've talked to him, I got his card, but maybe that's something, maybe why couldn't we get three of them?
We got all kind of money.
The biggest thing is just the timing, just trying to get it going, and we do our work, you know, it's typically when everybody's busy, you know, when everybody's got other work going on.
I mean, like now.
Now, you're a little, it's a little hard to kinda do it just because of work.
Yeah.
Alright, so, uh, Steve suggested we take one fifty out of war, out of the warning sirens, so.
And, and let me, let me tell y'all this on the warning sirens.
Yeah, yeah, we get that.
Word, come on up here. I mean, we, we, last year and up to date now, we spent thirty-seven thousand dollars on maintaining the sirens we got now. And, and my rural part, and probably Steve's too, you put more sirens there, people still not gonna hear us.
Right.
This, he's got an app, there's an app that we can get that for the people of Rankin County could download, and it would send a message to if there's a storm or...
We talked about that before.
That's where the numbers came from, uh, Mr. Morrow, y'all remember about eighteen months ago, ask about an app? We went out, we looked at it, we found it.
Morrow asked about it.
Hey, we actually started this in the previous, before you.
Well, it's eighteen twenty thousand dollars to pull the trigger on it, is what it would cost Andrew.
To do what?
To get this app set up.
To get this civic ready app that's got the ability to, uh, geofence all the way down to, uh, tornado warnings, uh,
Traffic.
all kinds of stuff.
Well, my phone already goes off when there's a tornado.
Yeah, but it tells me you got one and get ready, and they find out it's up in...
Well, you know, all that is fine and dandy, but
This opinion point.
That's just if people download the app, though, you know?
That's correct.
You can't make everybody download the app.
That's correct.
But I agree with you, you can be, unless you're right under one, you're not gonna hear inside TV going or asleep.
That's exactly right, those, those sirens are specifically designed that if you are outside with no external ambient noise, and you are inside the effective warning lane, that you might hear to alert you to go inside. It's not made to shake you out of bed at two o'clock in the morning.
You definitely can't, can't hear what they say.
You're air conditioned running, you'll sleep, you're not gonna hear it, air conditioned run, yeah.
Probably not.
Yeah.
Probably not. And, uh, Mr. Calhoun asked me to run some numbers this morning, we got, just wanted to pull some numbers up, and rough numbers about thirty-seven thousand dollars in repair costs from, uh, that was all of last year and to date this year. Uh, we had three sirens specifically that we spent about twenty-five thousand dollars on within a week. Uh, the last siren that you purchased that Jackson Communications put in for us, uh, on Old Highway eighty and Highway eighty, it took them eighteen months, just last week, it finally turned green, um, that it's supposedly functioning like it's supposed to. Thirty-three thousand dollars eighteen months later for a brand new siren to get work, so.
Wow, what, what was the problem?
They can't tell me, they have no idea. They also, that's where the twenty-five thousand dollars came in, working on three sirens. We had one, they went out there and looked at it, they told me that it was absolutely not repairable. They had talked to the corporate office, it's absolutely not repairable. I called another guy to go out there and work on it for forty-five hundred dollars, it's working right now. They wanted me to spend another thirty-three thousand. It took seventeen thousand dollars to repair two modules on two different sirens. And I've told them after going through this several months ago, whatever Rankin County purchases from you, do not throw it away. Bring it to me and I'll throw it away, because I wanna put my eyes on it. A lot of stuff I have no idea what I'm looking at, but I wanna look at. And, uh, so their tech shows up, unloads a bunch of stuff out of his truck, his siren parts, and he tells me, hold on to this stuff right here, because this is all good stuff. You can throw all that away because it's no good. Absolutely, we almost had to put another roof on our building because I almost tore it off. Why in the world did you charge me seventeen thousand dollars to pull parts that you just told me are working out of my siren? So, I called another guy, took those spare parts that they pulled out and fixed another one. So, that's the whole reason behind the, the two hundred and fifty, it's supposed to be three hundred thousand dollar project in the bond on the sirens is to totally get away from Motorola. Jackson Communications has us on communications, there's nobody else that can work on that, we have to go through them. And that's the deal we're working with, with Wayland and AT&T on a total turnkey, different activation process of our sirens, and that's what we're working on.
Even, you, you said that amount of money we spent, you know, that's not gonna go away though, right?
No.
I mean, so, just saying that thirty thousand, we still gonna be spending money going forward, maintaining all this stuff.
The only way you're gonna be able to eliminate your repair costs on your weather sirens is if you take a page out of Pearl River County and go pull every one of them up out of the ground.
Well, you know, I think we had a decision years ago to go with weather, weather radios versus sirens and...
That didn't work out.
Decision was to stay with sirens, so.
Everybody's got a cell phone nowadays, though.
Almost. And some people have, still have their flip phone, that would not work.
That's true, but you could get it before it rained.
Flip phone?
The, the civic ready program is, a lot of you folks have probably heard of, uh, Code Red and things of that nature. The civic ready, we believe from what we've looked at, had a lot better program. The reason it's so expensive is because you could geocash it. You take, uh, things such as, uh, the sheriff's department, when they have instances where they have an active shooter, they have an SRT call out, their people will be able to go into this app and geofence however big an area that they want. Uh, because, uh, one square mile radius, eight blocks, whatever it is, they can go in there and geofence that, and as soon as they hit the button on his stuff, it's gonna I pause it out, which is the same thing that you're getting with your Amber Alerts and your, uh, your weather warnings now.
I'm good with it, if there's a way we can make them work.
Automatically gets an alert, just whatever information that the sheriff puts in there. Uh, we've, we've got situations, shelter in place, do not leave your home, or whatever it is.
On the additional sirens you're talking about, Jay, I mean, that's adding, what, ten more? Is what this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is? Is that ten more?
I don't know what it is.
Like twenty-five thousand a piece, or thirty?
Last one we paid was thirty-three thousand.
Okay.
Per siren.
Per siren.
Well, you gotta add that, say if we paying thirty-eight now to maintain what we got, add another.
Oh, it is, I don't, I don't.
Well, what, what, uh, is that the, didn't one time you say there was a, uh, is this the lesser of the two sirens? One time you said there was a... I thought it was two different sirens.
We did, we did have two different types.
Okay. What, this is the lesser of the, this is one that don't talk, that's the cheap, cheaper.
Well, just to finance them, how many heads you got?
I don't mean, I don't have to say it, I won't go the cheapest route, I'm saying it's less expensive if you don't talk.
I say let's maintain the ones we got and don't buy any new ones. If we're looking at moving away from them, I don't wanna put new ones up, and then three, four years from now, there's some, you know, we do this app and we disconnect all of them.
There, there are a lot of areas, and you know some of them, and, uh, that definitely need one. And I think that's the reason we had this put in here, but I can see what you're saying, if you don't wanna...
I don't know, I kinda like siren myself, but...
I do think we need to change the activation on them, and, uh...
That's what so much money's for?
Absolutely.
How much of the two fifty is for doing that?
Out of the thirty-three thousand dollars, it lost about fifty percent of that cost just to make it go off.
No, we, we got two fifty budgeted, how much of the two fifty is to swap over and go with AT&T?
That was, when Mr. Morrow put that in there, it's supposed to have been three hundred thousand dollars for ten new sirens.
Yeah.
Since then is when we've run into all of these issues, and I can't with good conscience come and put a purchase order in for Jackson Communications when it took them a year and a half, just all the trouble that I've had with sirens.
Yeah.
I can't in good conscience do that, that's why...
Well, why'd we only put two fifty in it? I never heard of three hundred.
I don't know.
Did you? Have you all heard of it, huh?
But I do know
That was kinda mixed up.
that fifty percent of the cost of the sirens is to activate them, that's the Motorola radio and the ACE thirty-six hundred. It's fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, we don't need that if we're not putting them up.
So, no, you won't need that at all.
I mean, it's a hundred percent.
Need the two fifty?
Hundred percent.
Yeah, not all of them.
He wants to swap over from Motorola to go with AT&T.
If you don't, if you don't do anything, it won't cost you enough, if you don't do anything.
Except keep the ones we got and maintain them.
That's it.
Wait a minute, so what, you're wanting to swap over from Motorola to AT&T?
No.
That's what we're looking for.
Well, it's AT&T through Jackson Communication.
No, no, no.
No?
This is totally different, this is the first time this has ever been done anywhere in the world to take a, uh, weather siren, federal, different manufacturers, and move them over to cellular technology. That's why AT&T and Wayland, both their corporate offices are, uh, in a collaboration right now that are extremely fired up to, uh, to be able to try to bring this technology out. And that's why we're nowhere in, that's why anything's easy, is we're letting them make sure that everything works as designed.
So, after you get it, well, we can bring it back and discuss it then. You go with that? I mean, we're not really spending money now anyway.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying we could use that two fifty.
We need a hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, we just won't be using it on...
Or you could ask the whole thing, we can go by two hundred and forty thousand dollars, probably.
Well...
What's your, what you wanna go?
Alright.
Well, I, I am concerned about these areas that, actually, some of these areas we're talking about were actually in the wave, gosh, eight, ten years ago, when we bought the other sirens, and they, but they weren't, we didn't have the money to put one there. They were in that zone, and that's the only thing I'm concerned about because they, you know, they were there then, they gotten worse now.
And, and I believe the first set of sirens you guys bought was in nineteen ninety-six.
No, this one, well, maybe the first.
Does that sound right?
We bought, trickled in through the years.
Yeah, we bought...
I think the first ones that came in in ninety-six.
I don't know, it's been my time.
We had a big group about, uh, was it?
They've got some pretty good age on them.
Yeah.
Two thousand fourteen?
I don't know, I mean, we've bought them throughout the years, here and there.
Yeah, I mean, we had a big, uh, yeah.
Last year, I think we bought, I think, we'll see, five or six.
I think we got a grant.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I'm talking about, Jay. And we tried to use the money to buy more of them, but the grant would only specify these certain ones, so we couldn't, couldn't stretch it out. We needed ten, I think we were able to get five or six or something.
Right.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright. Last, uh, Brad wanna talk about sirens, so other than that, unless anybody else has something else?
Brad was talking about striping, I think.